Good afternoon, everyone. Calling to order a special meeting of the Carson City Council. Madam Deputy City Clerk. Roll call for a determination of a quorum please.
Councilmember Davis Holmes.
Present.
Councilmember Hicks.
Present.
Councilmember Hilton.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Dear. Mayor Rollis.
Present.
Let the record show that Mayor Pro Tem Dear is absent.
Thank you. We have a quorum present. Calling, we have oral communications. Is there any member of the audience wishing to address the Carson, the special meeting of the Carson City Council? Only has to be this agenda item because it's a special meeting.
Once for the court's office.
Start the time please. Time is started, go ahead.
Mister Mayor, members of Carson City Council, I'm here to record, or right to record by objection, and the objection of community residents and taxpayers who question the thinking of three members of the city council to hold another special meeting. I'm bringing to your attention a visual aid because sometimes it helps to see the big picture. I passed out an attachment and it was lined in yellow. Here in the 2019 and the 2020 city council meetings to date, please note that the 2019, there were fifty-seven meetings held. Twenty-three of those meetings were special meetings. That's, do we lose a quorum? That's approximately forty percent of all your meetings. Forty percent, wow. So far for 2020, there are seven meetings and two special meetings. Tonight's meeting deals with formally adopting a resolution and/or formal council policy for assigned seating on the dais. Really? This is not an urgent matter and could have waited to the next meeting of the council. On Tuesday, the mayor said, quote, "I would like to ask Councilwoman Davis Holmes, Councilmember Hicks, and Mayor Pro Tem Jim Dear to consider withdrawing this request, and I will. We can direct the city manager right now to put this item on the agenda for the next council meeting," end quote. Immediately, Councilwoman Davis Holmes says, I quote, "I want to leave it," end quote. Then the mayor asked Councilwoman Hicks, and his reply was, "February six works for me," end quote. When the mayor asked the mayor Pro Tem, his response, quote, "My policy is that if my colleagues ask me to call a special meeting, I will say yes unless I'm not available." Or is the time?
You got one minute.
Okay. Folks, this is so childish and would be laughable, except for the tremendous waste of time and money for something that could have waited. One last comment, what about open government transparency? Councilwoman Davis Holmes says that's why we're having it at five o'clock, so the public, they have an opportunity, end quote. Opportunity for what? Special meetings give a notice of twenty-four hours, hardly enough time for working folks or moms to arrange a schedule on such short notice for an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the Carson City Council meeting at this time? Seeing none, that concludes oral communication portion of agenda?
I'd like to speak.
Well, you can't, you can't both, we lose a quorum. Then we're adjourned. If we're losing a quorum, we're adjourned.
We're not adjourned, I'm sitting here.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I don't know what you're doing.
You don't need to know.
I don't need to know.
Does the timer not work?
It's nothing, I'm...
I got you.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Cedric Hicks, speaking to you as a resident of the city of Carson. Basically, I'm here to just find out when we have our special meetings, the thing is always an issue, but I'm just hoping that at some point in time, we can at least get together and work on one accord so that we can get things in place. It seems as if we kind of go back and forth and back and forth, and I just think that we are a working body that can actually make things happen. So I just hope at some point in time that we can just get on the same accord.
I have a question, I don't quite understand what you meant. I don't know if that was code or what, I didn't understand. Get on one accord, I didn't know what that means.
Working together. We used to work together at some point in time, and it seems as if we kind of got kind of off kilter or something, but I'm just hoping, my comment is that we're hoping that we can become together and work together on it. Because I know that you're going for higher aspirations, and I know that things are in place, just so that we can stay cohesive at some point in time.
Councilman, I mean, we're here at a special meeting that you called. So you called a special meeting to give us this lecture?
No, no, not the lecture. We had a prior speaker before me that came and talked about the issues of costs. Just wanted to make sure that we can move forward with this process.
Next. No, that's why I'm concerned.
The guy with the beard by the left, speak.
Before we go to the agenda, I just want to...
This is under oral communication?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Oral communication. This item could have been addressed before because the motion that was made, looking at the minute order, already stated where it should be. And if we're gonna work together, we call special meetings for everybody that's concerned because council members cannot put anything on the agenda unless we ask the mayor. And we should be able to call our city manager and say, "We'd like to add this item to the agenda." Every item that I requested to go on this agenda just about, he probably mentioned a few I didn't ask him and it didn't go on, was rejected. So in order for us to get our point across as elected official officials, who were elected by the residents of the city of Carson, we have to use another tool to get our message on. And if I cannot call, because the mayor looks at the agenda, he decides what's gonna go on there, and he says no. In a democracy we had before, years ago, a council person called the city manager said, "I'd like to add this item on the agenda." If it wasn't too time consuming, it would go on the agenda. But, and then that mayor would call and say, you know, "This is too time consuming, can't we postpone this till later?" If it were me, and I said, "Of course." But we're not afforded that opportunity. And for the same open, we'll come down here wondering why we're having special meetings, you know exactly why we're having special meetings. You know exactly why. This is not something that's new. So that's what I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, under oral communication. If we were afforded the opportunity, all of us, to put items on the agenda, not just one or two, you wouldn't have any special meeting. Because you would call and say, you know, "Councilwoman, or Councilman, or..." Let's hold this on until the next week. Now, look at that courtesy, I don't even know. City manager calls and says, "Well, the mayor doesn't want to put it on." That's not right. I wasn't elected by you. And you weren't elected by me. I was elected by the residents of the city of Carson, and things that concern me and my constituents and the other residents of the city. I'd like to discuss it.
That's it?
So...
And I'll try and, what, do you, Mister Mayor?
Thank you. So if I had a copy of your speech, Councilman, I would do a Nancy Pelosi and tear it up.
Do not answer.
Because it's not accurate at all. First of all, no one asked me to put this item on the agenda. At the last council meeting, as our former mayor Pro Tem indicated, I offered to put this on the next city council meeting to avoid this special meeting, to avoid the expense and waste of time. Secondly, with respect to putting items on the agenda, I don't know the history, but when Jim Dear was mayor, he is the one that initiated the rule that, the two-step process, which I believe is close to ten years old. There's a two-step process that's close to ten years old, but maybe in his comments, Mayor Pro Tem Dear can address that and correct me how long ago that two-step process took effect. I asked again, any items to be placed on the agenda, all you had to do is ask me. And then we have, we have the two-step process, and then the body votes. So again, this two-step process, it was created long, long before I was mayor, long before I was even on the city council. This item has absolutely no urgency whatsoever. And I want to read it so it's clear to everyone what we're discussing. It says, item one, one item, there's only one item on this agenda. Discuss council seating arrangements. That is why we are here, to discuss the council seating arrangements. And now I've learned that this is not even being televised. There, it's no transparency whatsoever. It's my understanding from Councilmember Hilton that on Tuesday, the council was made aware. I wasn't here, I didn't hear it, I had left, I guess. But staff or the council, some of the council members, were made aware that this meeting was not going to be televised. That this session of the Carson City Council was not going to be televised. Yet, the three of you insisted on moving forward without it being televised. And at the same time, you talk about, oh, well, you know, "I requested this item be on the agenda, it's not on the agenda." Never happened. You addressed the issue, well, you know, the residents want to know what's going on. They don't know because it's not being televised. So again, as Nancy Pelosi, I tear up that speech because it's just not true, it's not accurate. You can't fabricate facts from thin air. The facts are the facts. This, this transcript, and I thank you, Mister Whit, for providing this, is verbatim from the last council meeting, where I specifically asked, "We'll put it on the next agenda." I said, "We'll make a motion to direct the city manager to put it on the next agenda." But instead, we incurred the expense of preparing this agenda, reproducing this agenda, directing staff to go out and post it as required by law, posting of this agenda. Now we have staff here that should be working on more important things like they do in some other cities. Instead, we're here trying to figure out where the council members are gonna sit. So, Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem here wanted to speak. Mayor Pro Tem was queued up.
Well, I don't know what issue to address first, but I'll take the one about the council members putting things on the agenda. Yes, I devised a plan that I thought was very workable and fair. If the mayor, at the time, didn't want to put something on the agenda, there are two other ways for it to go on the agenda. Either the city manager could put the item on the agenda, or three council members working in agreement to put something on the agenda could be done. That's no longer the case, Mister Mayor. Right now, only you can put things on the agenda, and the city manager cannot without your authorization. That's a major change, and I don't really know any city. I mean, they might exist in California, but I don't know of any city in California where the city manager cannot put something on the agenda. But if it does happen, I suppose, I don't know which one. But the two-step process was designed by me in order to create fairness. If I, as the mayor at the time, didn't want something on the agenda because maybe I was opposed to the item, well, three council members could go through a two-step process and put it on the agenda. Part of the reason I devised it in that manner was that some council members were putting things on the agenda that were not relevant to the city government. They were putting things on that really should not be on our city council meeting. But of course, that's just my opinion.
Can you give us an example, from a...
Sure, sure. Suppose a council member wanted to put a resolution in favor of some legislation in Sacramento that's, that's just going to a committee, and in reality, it's gonna be changed ten times before it actually comes to the floor of the state senate and state assembly. And a resolution of the city council, sometimes they want it on at the last minute, and the staff members on Thursday were getting this, and they were being pressured to get it on the agenda for the Tuesday meeting, and they were already put the agenda together. So I did it to kind of curtail that last-minute thing, and also to curtail the sudden resolutions. And in reality, we know in Sacramento that things change a lot from an original bill, and the effect of us as a body of passing a resolution may have zero bearing on those committee members in that particular committee on that subject. So that's why I devised it the way I did, and it seemed to work quite well for a number of years. So that's one thing. And then, um, actually, this council meeting is taking up only one subject matter, and I have a compromise solution I'd like to bring forward, if we are taking the item up now, are we?
No, we're not, there's Councilmember Hilton wanted to speak.
So this is discussion before the...
This is oral communication.
From...
We're still in oral communication. Yes.
But we're not supposed to be speaking in that case.
Well, that's what happens when, uh, Councilmember Hicks wanted to speak.
I spoke from the...
And then Councilwoman...
I spoke from the actual president.
Assistant City Attorney, um, I thought we were on the agenda item, and that's why we're all speaking on it.
But, um... Yeah, I think we did oral communication, I mean, when I spoke, I spoke from the actual podium as a resident.
I saw that, um, and that's appropriate. I suggest that we take the agenda item up because we are not legally allowed to have discussion under oral communication from members of the public.
Well, I don't think we were having, I thought we weren't having a discussion. Councilwoman wanted to speak, she voiced her concern. I then spoke, and then you wanted to speak.
Well, I spoke because you referenced me and you kind of said, well, if that, you kind of inferred that you wanted information about the two-step process, you actually asked that.
Can we hear Mr. Attorney?
So we're not wrong with that. But I suggest that if there's no other members of the public that want to speak on oral communication, we go to the agenda item. Because this meeting could be very short, or we can all talk a lot and make it a long meeting.
Well, I think that, so I hear Councilmember Hilton doesn't want to speak anymore, but then Councilwoman wanted to speak again. I don't know my queueing system, but I do recall you raising...
Once you start the agenda, I can say what I have to say.
Okay. So is there anyone else who wishes to address us on this one item at this special meeting at now five twenty-five on Thursday? Seeing none, that concludes oral communication portion of this agenda. We'll now go to item number one, Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item was brought forward by Mayor Pro Tem Jim Dear and councilmembers Lilla Davis Holmes and Cedric Hicks. And it's to discuss and provide direction on city council seating arrangements on the dais, to update and rescind any and all previous rules on council seating on the dais, and to adopt a resolution and oral formal city policy, and a formal city policy regarding council assigned seating on the dais. I can very briefly update you on what the most recent actions have been. Although truthfully, if you want to come up with something new, it's irrelevant, you are free to come up with what you want. But most recently, in March twenty-seven, twenty nineteen, it was moved by a minute order that the mayor Pro Tem would sit either to the right or left of the mayor. And, and then there was also in existence a city policy, CPP, a one, dot, oh-two, dot, oh-three, that said that the mayor will always sit in seat number three, and the mayor Pro Tem would always sit in seat number four. So three is where you currently are mayor, and four is where the mayor Pro Tem currently is. So the CPP and the minute order actually conflict. So we don't have any real, it's not clear, and it's completely up to the council in any case to decide. We're just looking for direction.
This is not working, this request to speak?
The queue, no, no.
If you like, request from, if I can, I'd like to speak.
Does that conclude the City Manager's report?
Yes, sir, unless you have any questions and things.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Mayor. I'm pretty certain that the public in Carson doesn't really care where, if the mayor Pro Tem sits to the right or left of the mayor on the dais. So therefore, I make this motion. I move that we rescind any and all previous rules on council assigned seating on the dais, and we adopt a resolution, or if the, if the council body prefers a council policy, it could be done by minute order on the, for assigned seating on the dais. And my motion is this, that the mayor Pro Tem can sit to the right or left of the mayor at the sole discretion of the mayor Pro Tem. That's my motion.
Second.
So, under discussion. Did you want to speak?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Mister Mayor, I'd also like, if the mayor Pro Tem will take it, to, to assign the, you said right and left, once you decide, and then we can go back and vote on what the council's gonna sit. Is that what we're gonna do?
I give you a separate motion if you want, but this...
Yeah, that would be my, I'd like to make a separate motion, a substitute motion once we decide. And I'd like to make a motion as to where the council will sit. Because, how do we handle that, Mister City Attorney?
Well, well, hold on, hold on.
I'd like to make an amendment to the, hold on, what?
Well, you can make an amendment if you wanted to accept that.
Yeah.
I don't know what it is yet.
My amendment will be that, that Juwan and I's standing will are, and that you and Cedric exchange seats, wherever you decide. He's gonna decide what he's gonna say.
Oh, Mister Mayor, to the City Attorney, as long as it doesn't change my motion, I'll accept it as a friendly amendment. No offense, but I don't really care where the other council members sit as long as they're in the room with me too, so we can hear what I have to say.
Okay.
So, at the last council meeting, we voted, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and Mayor Pro Tem sitting to the left of the mayor, and that motion passed. And it passed four one. Councilwoman, they made a motion for reconsideration at the council, at the same council meeting, and that motion failed. It is my understanding that pursuant to our rules, that once a motion for reconsideration has been made and it fails, it cannot be reconsidered again unless it's unanimously approved. And what you're suggesting here... I'm sorry, I'm not finished, I have the floor. And what you're suggesting here is that to overrule what was done at the previous city council meeting, designating specifically where the mayor Pro Tem was to sit, with the new motion made by Mayor Pro Tem, that he gets to choose where to sit, which is inconsistent with what was voted on. So, because we already voted, it's a reconsideration. No matter how you slice it and dice it, it's a motion for reconsideration. So I would ask, I hate to put you on the spot.
Mister Mayor, I think I need to read the motion, because I withdrew my motion. Because I knew I couldn't bring it back.
Hold on. Can you, first of all, opine as to whether or not, what, the motion for reconsideration is limited to once? And then to do it again, we need unanimous consent?
Yes, Mister Mayor. Yes, Mister Mayor, I concur with your conclusion. If a motion for reconsideration has been raised and subsequently denied, then unanimous consent or approval is required.
I'm gonna pass this, and I prefer to pull it because I rescinded my motion and I voted. Okay?
That's what I'm saying, you did vote, we...
I re-voted, and there was no motion for reconsideration. You're saying that there's a motion for reconsideration. The minute order, you were in violation in the first place because the minute order already said that the mayor Pro Tem can sit either way he wants. What you called was, the mayor Pro Tem always sits to the left. That is not true. And that's why I said, the minute order clearly says where the mayor Pro Tem will sit, to the right or the left of the mayor at his, at the mayor Pro Tem's discretion. So there was no motion to reconsider because I withdrew it and I voted. Because you said, Jim asked, do you want me to sit there now? You said yes, because that's what the order said. But if you look at the minute order, that's not what it says. If you look at that for me, that's not what it says.
So...
The S and P, the minute order says, I'm going to...
The minute order says, it was motioned that the minute order be amended to read that the mayor Pro Tem can sit either to the right or to the left of the mayor, and draft in the form of S and P on motion of Dear, and seconded by myself, and unanimously carried by the following voter, all of us here except for him, who was asking.
Yes. So I guess let me try to explain it one more time.
I didn't have a substitute motion.
At the last council meeting, you made a motion for reconsider. Councilmember Hilton even seconded it. I then raised, wait a minute, he didn't vote with the majority. Can he, can he still raise it?
That's Councilmember Hilton.
I'm sorry, sorry, apologize. Councilmember Hicks seconded the motion. I said, no, wait a minute, he didn't vote with the majority. He cannot, and the city attorney opined that, yes, he could, because all it says is only the maker of the motion, not the seconder of the motion. And we voted, and it failed.
The motion was out of order because I probably dealt with the permit of the mayor Pro Tem. The whole motion of where the people were sitting was out of order.
That's not, no, we asked the city attorney that because we were voting on the mayor Pro Tem. So my motion was to nominate Councilmember Dear and have him sit to the left. And we voted on that, and that passed, three, two, and then four, one. And that's what, that's what we did. That's what, that's what happened.
That's not a motion to reconsider, just as to...
No matter, you can call it tomato, tomato, tomate, whatever you want to, it's a motion for reconsideration.
I spoke to the city attorney, our city attorney, and she said this was in line, and that's what I'm going by. That all we needed to do was rescind all these, a motion to adopt a new resolution because it's not clear, and that's what we were doing. Is making them, adopting a new resolution so we would have it clear.
For the next, for the next generation?
No, we need to do that for the next generation.
Councilwoman, our, again, if you want to reconsider your, the motion that failed, I said, we're happy to do that if we all unanimously agree.
That's, I didn't make a motion to reconsider.
There was a, at the last council meeting, there was a motion to reconsider.
I said, Jim says I do not want to reconsider if you're gonna pull mine out, so I pulled that portion out, and we voted to make it Mayor Pro Tem.
We voted, no, you tried, no, we voted.
What does it say, Joy? On what, Councilmember?
The motion. Because when it came up, I made the motion to reconsider, and Jim says, no, I don't want to reconsider. We have to reconsider the entire thing. And I pulled back.
So she doesn't have the minutes from the last city council meeting?
I don't have it with me at the moment. I can, I would have to listen to...
And what really should have happened, because this, I should have brought back the last agenda, not the one, the meeting before. We had ample enough time to bring it back if you actually wanted to.
If you had asked me to, I would have. I was never asked. Council, and, oh, that does remind me one more point. And the other thing, you said that there was a previous minute order saying that when you sit, that's true. A minute order is just a minute order. It can be overruled at any time, and we can ask our in-house parliamentarian to correct me if I'm wrong. A minute order is just that, a vote of three of the council members, which can be overruled later on.
And the S and P also?
S and P cannot be overruled.
Yes, S and P also says, what does the S and P say?
It says on the left, it says seat number four.
On the left. Uh-huh, that's right here. That's where he is.
So the minute order, you're saying is, is out of the window?
A minute order can be overruled by just a simple majority of the council. S and P can be overruled by simple majority, if it's properly agendaized, and then we can overrule it. It only requires three votes.
Mister Mayor, so we do have a motion on the floor, so my question is, where are we with the motion to fill the...
So that's why I was asking council for, to an opinion. The motion, again, no matter how it's pronounced or couched, if it's a motion for reconsideration, it's out of order, and we can't take that motion.
Yes, to regularate. If in fact, a motion for reconsideration was, was heard, then unanimous vote is required.
So I, I move that... So I, I move that.
They call a unanimous vote.
You want, okay. I move that we reconsider, uh, the previous reconsider motion that failed. Uh, so it can be unanimously, so we can do this. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. What's that?
So we do what?
I understand.
So we do what?
When it's clear.
So we can reconsider and do what you wanna do.
So you put a motion out and reconsider?
Yeah, if it's, if it's approved unanimously, then you can do this. It's gotta be approved unanimously.
Mayor, um, unfortunately, Joy doesn't have minutes yet, but if you would be interested in knowing what occurred, we could take a very short break and let her listen to the video, and then report back to you what she would say occurred, if that's helpful.
There's a motion, you know, let's go vote.
Okay, so.
And what do you call unanimous, three votes?
Unanimous is five.
No.
All.
It's everybody. So, uh, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, yes.
Mister Mayor. Do we need to sit here and vote on this? This is not gonna be unanimous vote.
Well, there's a motion.
I need to find out from Sunny how we can best approach this.
There, there, there's a motion, there's hope, with all due respect, there's a motion, and it's been seconded, there's a motion pending. We need to vote on it, so I'm asking that we vote on it. Um,
What's the motion?
The motion is to reconsider, uh, the previous action, um, and it requires unanimous, uh, approval by, as far as to do that.
What's the action? What's the action? The previous action or what?
The previous action of designating where the Mayor Pro Tem can sit.
Okay.
Uh, so.
And your motion, and so Jim can't make a motion, is that what I'm hearing?
It's out of order, we, 'cause it's, it's a reconsideration.
I don't believe that, uh, Sunny would have told me that.
It's a motion for, it's a reconsideration.
I did, I'm not asking about reconsideration.
There was no conversation about the other council members, we tried to do the other council members, and she said that was out of order, because that was not properly agendized.
Mister Mayor?
Hold on. Um, she said, when we, when we moved to where the other council members could sit, I tried to do that, and she said, no, Mayor, with all due respect, she didn't say with all due respect, I think that's what she meant to say. That, uh, that the act, the motion, at your insistence, Councilwoman, was not proper, because it was not properly agendized. But the Mayor Pro Tem, and then we had a discussion, but the Mayor Pro Tem motion was proper, because the selection of the Mayor Pro Tem was on the agenda, and they went hand in hand.
They, they never gone hand in hand, because we usually have it at the, uh, at the community center.
No, in this motion, they were hand in hand, they went hand in.
Mister Mayor, from memory, the motion was only to the Mayor Pro Tem had to sit him at one point on the dais. The items before us now is the entire city council meeting.
Yes, that's what I said, that's, that's proper, we can do that.
That's, that's what this, that's what this item is about?
Mayor Pro Tem's motion was to allow him to sit wherever he wants. That's what is a motion.
His motion, so you're saying his motion was out of order, but based upon what it says on the subject, discuss council seating arrangement in the dais, it doesn't say any, any.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So is there any further discussion?
Uh, certainly. Uh, first of all, I think the motion is in order, because obviously a city council can change their mind, especially on the minute order. Uh, if they want to, majority can do that. And second point is the City Attorney, uh, apparently approved this wording of this agenda item today. So the assistant City Attorney is talking to you about decision, um, and reconsideration.
Reconsideration.
Um, but that's a different subject. The motion to reconsider that the Councilwoman made was failed, um, was to redo the entire selection of Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah.
No, and where the Mayor Pro Tem.
Which included where the Mayor Pro Tem sat.
Thank you for speaking to me.
Can I redo that?
I always do.
Yes, you do. Go ahead.
So, um, uh, I do feel though that, um, it's interesting that you're making a motion to reconsider and seconded by Councilwoman Hilton. You, of course, have to vote yes.
Correct.
Seconder doesn't have to vote yes in parliamentary procedure, even if it's second motion.
But I don't have to vote yes, I can make a.
Hey, no, you can't make a motion and vote no against your own motion in parliamentary procedure.
Sure you can.
Uh, no, it's mov- you can't. You can vote against an amendment or substitute motion, but you can't be playing with a legislative body by saying, I'm gonna make this motion and then vote against your own motion. You really can't do that in parliamentary procedure, you know, loo- look it up. It's a obscure rule, but it, it does exist.
We've done that before, so we've done, we've been in violation of that too then.
Well, but just think of the practicality of that, though. Why could someone make a motion and they vote against their own motion?
To, to curtail debate, so we can go on with the rest of the evening.
Okay, so that's the second one, the City Attorney did approve this being on the agenda, I mean, she didn't, uh, say there was no reason it couldn't be on. And my motion is simply to add an aspect. It's not changing who the Mayor Pro Tem is. Uh, it's just an add, it's an aspect of it, it's not changing it completely. The aspect is, as I mentioned, um, the motion is to allow the Mayor Pro Tem to sit in seat number two or seat number four. And that, it's, it's as simple as that, it's, there's no more to it than that. But, uh, now, of course, the Councilwoman, uh, wanted to make an amendment to that, but that amendment was not part of my motion.
And so I withdrew it.
And, and I, I mean, I, I didn't look, I looked at the parliamentary procedure that you cited, but I will.
Okay.
But in order to avoid any, um, confusion, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay.
But I read this, you guys keep referring to what the City Attorney approved, what the City Attorney approved. Discuss council seating arrangements via the dais. Update and rescind any and all previous rules on council assigned seating on the dais. Adopt a resolution and or formal council policy regarding council assigned seating on the dais. Nowhere on here does it say reconsider what was done at the last council meeting, undo, uh, the, the nomination of the Mayor Pro Tem and, uh, his designated seating spot, doesn't say that anywhere in here. I don't, I mean, the only reference I see to Mayor Pro Tem is, uh, it, it's when it says that you requested this item be on here. But it doesn't say that it's permissible. I don't object, you're right, with respect to the other council members, 'cause again, we had that coun- we had that discussion. With respect to the other council members, I attempted to designate at the last, at the previous council meeting where every council member can sit, and that's where the City Attorney said, no, with all due respect, again, that's me adding that to it. With all due respect, that, I, that was not permissible, because that was not a gen- that's why I interpreted what was going on today.
Okay, that makes sense. Uh, in the past, the Mayor did designate where everyone sat, but that's not the rule anymore. Uh, my recollection that we had a minute order little over a year ago, in January twenty eighteen, not a S and P, but a minute order. To designate subject. Hello?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Okay.
Maybe.
I have this if you. Okay, it seems to be working again. Um, to designate, um, the seating arrangement by seniority. And my motion is going to supersede that minute order, which we can do, um, by saying that the Mayor Pro Tem can sit in seat number two or seat number four. And that, and to rescind that minute order of designating where he sits, because we all sit, uh, other than the Mayor, the council members sit. So we're doing it based on the Mayor Pro Tem situation and seniority. And I'm just saying that, um, I want to kind of end this
Your motion?
This, this, um, continuous discussion, not just tonight or previous nights, because it's really, uh, not a major consideration for our city on whether I sit in seat number two or seat four, and I've made public statements on it in the past, and I haven't changed my mind about that. And that's simply, I'm gonna reiterate, my motion is to rescind that minute order from a little over a year ago, January twenty eighteen, and say that the rule will be that the Mayor Pro Tem can sit in number two or number four.
Second.
That's it.
Councilmember Hilton is raising his hand.
I, I was just gonna say, uh, uh, he made his motion, I was gonna make a substitute motion to give Joy the time to go and read those minutes, uh, and bring it back at the next council meeting, uh, to, to get clarity on what was said. Uh, but, so.
Is that your substitute?
That's my substitute motion to his motion.
I'll second that.
Um, discussion?
Sure.
I, uh, speak, uh, in opposition to the substitute motion, because my motion, I believe, will solve the problem.
Your motion?
And the substitute motion will extend the animosity, the hostility, and the petty bickering over where I sit. I really don't want a discussion of where I sit, so that's why I made the motion, Mister Mayor, to, to end that. That's why I'm not gonna support the substitute motion.
So thank you for explaining that.
You're welcome.
Um, you, you just got through clarifying, and I wanna sum up, as, I, 'cause I think you and I are in accord as to what happened. And what happened at the last meeting is that, uh, I nominated, I nominated you to be Mayor Pro Tem and to sit to my left, and then it was seconded, and we voted. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We then had a motion for reconsideration on it that was made by a Councilwoman, seconded by a Councilmember Hicks, that failed, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
We then had a discussion as to whether or not we could decide where the other council members would be seated, and the City Attorney said that that was out of order, because that was not properly agendized, is that correct?
That's correct, and it also broke down into confusion.
Correct. Oh.
Sorry.
Then, so the motion for reconsideration failed, so the, we recognize that the only way to reconsider where the Mayor Pro Tem sits is through a motion for reconsideration. And I guess maybe we're getting caught up on the semantics of what it means to reconsider something. Um, there, there's a, I mean, I'm asking you as a parliamentarian, someone who respects the process, that if there is a motion to designate where the Mayor Pro Tem sits and passes, and if there is a motion to reconsider that, and it fails, is it your position that at the very next council meeting, even though the S and P forbids the motion to be reconsidered, unless it's unanimous? Right, well, first of all, do you accept that?
Uh, no. I don't believe there's S and P saying that, it's the City Attorney, I don't know, can correct me if I'm wrong.
Is it an S and P, maybe I'm mischaracter- what is?
I thought he was going over.
It's the code.
It's a what?
It's the code.
The code, sorry, not the S and P, the code. It actually has even more precedence.
Right, so, the, uh, municipal code, uh, Mister, huh, is it Veronica?
Lee.
Levy.
Lee, Mister Lee, thank you, Ben. Um, so it's the municipal code?
Uh, yes, it is, it's section two four oh nine F.
And that's talking about reconsidering, uh, a motion that was made at a council meeting?
Yes, that states that if there is a motion for reconsideration that has failed, then unanimous vote is required.
Okay, but my motion is not to reconsider, my motion is not to change who the Mayor Pro Tem's selection is. My motion is simply to make a simple adjustment to that, uh, motion. And I don't think that we can never change or, or adjust, um, a rule.
And I, and I guess that's my question, is what, what differentiates? So if, if, if I made a motion to reconsider who the Mayor Pro Tem is and where he what, I mean, try to not reconsider, because I'm using the word reconsider, so obviously that's a motion for reconsideration. If I just said, well, I wanna make a motion to select a, a new Mayor Pro Tem, assuming it was properly agendized, and assuming that, uh, it didn't, wasn't any consistent with the code, just using this as a hypothetical, 'cause I'm trying to differentiate the two. If I say, well, I wanna make a motion to appoint a new Mayor Pro Tem and where he shall be seated, and then you would say, no, that motion has already been made, it's been seconded, it's been reconsidered. Sorry, you may answer different, but I'm trying to get to a point. And then I said, no, 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 I'm not just saying, no, I'm gonna, what I'm making, I'm making a motion to pick a new Mayor Pro Tem, designate where he sits, and where all the other council members shall sit, so it's all, everything together. So this motion is actually different than just selecting a new Mayor Pro Tem and where he shall sit. Because what my motion now is, is to pick a new Mayor Pro Tem, where the new Mayor Pro Tem will sit, and where the other council members will sit. And then my question to you is, is that different from, and, and different, so it, it's not considered a motion for reconsideration, even though I don't call it a motion for reconsideration?
To answer your question, Mister Mayor, in the past, in the first fifty years of the existence of the city of Carson, the Mayor Pro Tem can be selected by the city council at any council meeting, any month of the year. However, in this case, the charter would not allow you to do that. The charter says that Mayor Pro Tem is selected for a two-year period of time, it expires in two years. At the end of two years, you can select a different person or the same person to be Mayor Pro Tem.
So, that's why I said in my hypothetical, I said, assuming that there was no charter prohibition.
Oh, I did hear that.
I'm assuming there's no charter.
Well, why would you assume there's no charter when there is a charter?
Because I'm trying to understand where you draw the line as to where a motion is to reconsider and one that is not, because in the abstract, just 'cause one says, in other words, the distinction is not based on solely whether or not I say I make a motion for reconsideration. If I don't include the word reconsideration, and it still encompasses the original motion and it's redone, it's still a motion for reconsideration.
Yes, but let me point out something to you, Mister Mayor. The agendized item was for the city council to select a Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
The agendized item was not for the Mayor Pro Tem to be selected by the city council and assigned to a seat.
Correct.
So it wasn't on the agenda.
Yes, but.
It was added, and the City Attorney allowed it to be added to it as an aspect of it. I'm only addressing that aspect, and that's why it's on the agenda today. It wasn't on the agenda when we did it, but it's on the agenda tonight.
But you, and you will recall, because you recall the other particular conversations, that the Councilwoman said, well, I wanna just separate where the Mayor Pro Tem sits, and the City Attorney opined, said, no, it was a single motion. It was together. You can't separate, you can't just undo one, they're together.
To re- to reconsider.
To reconsider, yes.
You couldn't undo it, you could separate it.
Correct.
Or, um, if you, that motion reconsideration could not be for just part of it, it would have to be the entire motion. That's what she said, and that she's correct.
And, and that's what I'm trying to, so now I'm trying to understand what distinction you see between this item and that?
Okay, let me answer that, I just explained that to you. The selection of the Mayor Pro Tem was on the agenda as the selection of the Mayor Pro Tem. When that motion was made, it had passed, it was added to, I believe by you, that the Mayor Pro Tem would sit to the left.
Correct.
Now, that was not on the agenda.
And he said it was.
It was not on the agenda to discuss seating arrangements via the dais. It is tonight. So we can do this, we can do this tonight.
For the council. For the council, not for the Mayor Pro Tem. That, that's.
No, it was, it wasn't on the agenda to, to choose, to choose where the Mayor Pro Tem sat, it was just to choose who the, of the four council members would be the Mayor Pro Tem. And, and you added an aspect to the motion that was not on the agenda. But the City Attorney said it was a minor adjustment, and therefore it could be added, and she allowed it. Uh, I'm just saying, we, we're just addressing that minor aspect that was allowed to be added to an agenda item, even though it wasn't posted. And, and so now it's, hello?
Yes.
So now it's posted to address that aspect of it. Not the entire motion, not the item that was agendized, and therefore no reconsideration is even needed. For what we're trying to do tonight. My motion is in order because it's out of a motion of reconsideration of the agendized item. It's a motion to make another adjustment, and it's agendized to do it, so we can do it. If we so want to as a unified team to have a consensus, we we could do it if we want to.
So, may I ever try, I'm gonna try one more time, and if you don't answer, then you're right, so I'll try one more time. Assuming we don't have a charter. And if my hypothetical isn't clear, I want you to ask me where it, I can make it clear. If we have voted to, uh, select a new Mayor Pro Tem and designate where he sits, and that passed. And then there was a motion to reconsider just the seating part, and that was ruled, no, you have to do both at the same time because it was one motion. And the motion was made to reconsider it and it failed. Could I? Just re- set aside the fact that it's prohibited by the charter, in my hypothetical. Could someone say, okay, and not use the word reconsider? Could someone just say, you know, well, I want to select a new Mayor Pro Tem, designate where the new Mayor Pro Tem sits. And also designate where all the council members shall sit. And because I'm adding where all the other council members shall sit, this is not a motion for reconsideration. Would that be proper, that's all I know.
Well, in that case, it would not be proper.
Okay, thank you for your.
This agenda item is not a motion for consideration.
That that's my point, doesn't matter, it just because it doesn't have the word reconsider and it, it's still a motion for reconsideration.
In a hypothetical case, it would not be proper.
Okay, so what do we have before us right now? What we have before us right now is designating, modifying the motion that included where the Mayor Pro Tem shall sit. And you added where the other council members are going to be seated, that's the only thing.
That's not my motion, I'm not, I, my motion was not.
That that you you made a motion, there was a friendly amendment.
She withdrew it. Her, uh, amendment, I didn't want the amendment in the first place, and she withdrew it, so.
Well, okay, so.
The motion is as originally stated, and and no more. Not broader than what I stated. Only what I stated is the motion, which is agendized to that.
So, I, then that's, that I'm even more perplexed, and so, last time there was a motion to select the Mayor Pro Tem and designate where he was to be seated, he or she. And now you're saying, well, and there was a motion to try to sever them, and the city attorney said no at the time, so. Cuz she said no, you're trying to do it now, to say, well, we're gonna designate, that the, overrule what was done. How is that not a motion for reconsideration?
Yeah, I I don't think you understand what, uh.
There's a second on the floor, if we make a motion and do what we need to do.
Uh, what I'm trying to accomplish, I'm trying to modify the non-agendized adjustment. That's all, and no more than, I'm not. Accepting what she rescinded it, or if she brings it up again, I won't accept it, uh, her substitute, uh, her amendment, because I want the motion.
Can I call for the, call for the vote?
I want the motion to stand as I made it, and maybe we should ask the assistant city attorney if that's acceptable, um. Instead of us, you know, kinda like hypothetically, uh, bringing up things and debating it because, you know. It's already six o'clock, and I think we need to move on.
Okay, so so the question for clarification purposes is that, is whether your motion as made is acceptable? And your motion is to rescind all prior approvals with regard to, uh, council member seating deus arrangement? And.
No, that was in his motion, that that's as agendaized, that's different, his motion was very specific. His motion, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Pro Tem.
I got it, if you repeat my motion, that's fine.
Mayor Pro Tem's motion is that the city, I'm sorry, that the Mayor Pro Tem be able to select wherever, where he wants to sit, to the left or to the right of the mayor.
Right, the immediate, the immediate right of that, I'm not, not any seat, but seat number two or seat number four, to be specific and clear.
And to rescind other.
No, that would, no, that.
No, well, that, that we said, we said the minute order, the minute orders, because minute order is designated seniority and so forth.
His motion is very specific.
I'm not really interested in that right now, I'm interested in this, this compromise motion. And I'm trying to get it passed, but having a little trouble.
Okay, we can have a little.
Maybe the city attorney could opine on it.
Sure, yes, it is permissible for the Mayor Pro Tem to move to designate, uh, where he or she sits, either to the left or to the right of there.
And there's a second.
How is that not, I know we're not using the word reconsider, but how is that not a reconsideration of a motion? Where I would move that the Mayor Pro Tem sit to the, that Councilmember Dear become the Mayor Pro Tem, and that the Mayor Pro Tem sit to the left, and then that was voted on. And then there was a motion for reconsideration which failed, Mayor Pro Tem acknowledges it, it failed.
That's correct.
It, there was already a motion to reconsider. Um, and and now we're just taking half of it, that's, I I don't see that, then why, then why is there any limit? I mean, under that scenario, when there being, uh, the regulations that limit motions for reconsideration are, are, um. Not in any way carry any weight, cuz all it takes is one or two words to be changed, that that's not the purpose.
Well, I just, I, um, I consulted with Sonny Terminator, and that's something that she confirmed.
So we go for the vote?
Subject to the. Si- well. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I, um, would you accept the friendly amendment that that be subject to, uh, the review of the past council meeting? And subject to, um, the city attorney's review of of the motion?
Well, that sounds reasonable, but I I don't want to put it. Subject to the last council meeting because we're, we're not in agreement in it, we're not, we're, we're interpreting it differently.
It was a previous one, it was a. We're not, right, you and I are consistent, it's the councilwoman's decision.
Well, maybe, that's the point, but I I don't want this city council to debate this issue any longer. So I will accept half of what you're asking, which is subject to the city attorney's, um, you know, decision on whether or not his.
The motion, right.
Yeah, yeah, I I would, of course, we have to do it whatever is legal, we must do what is legal.
Okay.
That's your motion, you have a second.
It, so you accept that as a friendly amendment, the secondary motion accepts it as a friendly amendment, I'm still voting.
The second of the motion, you?
I second, but it's, we're going for the first one or the second one, you have two different motions.
You wanted it here. Oh, yeah.
Two different substitute motions.
Yes, so we're gonna vote on the Councilmember Hilton's substitute motion that in order to avoid any discussion, any confusion that. We defer this to the next council meeting and allow the city clerk's office to, uh, review and give the exact account of what happened. Uh, so with that, uh, all those in favor?
No.
Signify by saying aye, aye, those opposed?
No.
No.
Motion fails three two, Mayor Pro Tem Dear voting no, Councilmember Hicks voting no, and Councilwoman Davis Holmes voting no. We're now vote on the next motion, which is, um, to allow the Mayor Pro Tem to decide where to sit. Either to the left or the right of the mayor, uh, subject to, um.
City attorney.
The city attorney's review as to whether or not that constitutes a violation of the prohibition against a motion for reconsideration, correct?
Correct.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Hicks, I believe, and he accept said, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Um, those opposed, no, those in favor?
Yes.
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 Motion passes, Councilmember Hilton and myself voting no.
Number seven, okay.
So we're done?
No, we have to get this agenda.
It's after six, but go ahead.
I gotta go, I gotta, I have a meeting to go to.
I do too, so let's go.
Well, you wanna give this resolution.
Do what?
What's that?
What do you wanna do?
Resolution, adopt the resolution and any prior, uh, policies and procedures, that's on the agenda also.
We're done, so with that, that the zone for the motion. What's the agenda?
To move to adopt the resolution, rescinding any prior city policies, procedures, resolutions, amended orders regarding any deus seating. And instead amending this council city policy number, S N P number one oh two point oh three as the only policy regarding the establishment of city council seats. Arranges on the deus.
I I'm gonna ask that we defer that to the next council meeting cuz I think, I know I have to go, I just heard the Mayor Pro Tem say that he has to go.
And no one else, man, we're getting it up with her.
I believe Councilmember Hilton has to go, so we're gonna have a lack of a quorum.
And this is my motion. No, we have.
Well, the the councilwoman made a motion and the councilman seconded, there's a motion on the floor right now, so you can't adjourn the meeting when the motion's on.
She did not make a motion, she said it's up for discussion.
I said, I, this is my motion, is I move to adopt a resolution rescinding any prior city policies and procedures.
That's just.
Resolutions and amended orders regarding any deus seating and instead amending council policy number, procedure number one oh two oh three. As the city council policy regarding establishment of council seating arrangements on the deus as follows.
Correct.
And that the mayor.
So as follows, so I don't.
Okay.
What, when you say.
Do we have a resolution?
I don't have anything.
Okay, so looking at the deus from the public podium, the council seats will be considered number from left to right.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can Councilwoman, what do you mean?
I'm reading my motion, I wrote it down.
Okay.
The Mayor Pro Tem. The seats will be considered numbered from left to right, numbers one through five. Designated seats will be returned for the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, the mayor will always sit in the middle seat. The Mayor Pro Tem will sit either in the left or the right seat, and seats two or four, as decided by the council. And the city council will also decide the council member seating arrangements for seat numbers one, seat number two, and number four as applicable. Depending on which seat is not occupied by the mayor, is not occupied by the Mayor Pro Tem, that was this motion that I was trying to get through.
And Councilmember Hicks accepted it?
Yes.
And moved up and tabled that item.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table it.
Under discussion, actually I don't have discussion of the item, so I don't have discussion of the table.
Oh.
Well, we're not, we gotta vote to a majority to table it.
Yeah, so we're about, so, right, a more emotional.
Yeah, you need a majority to table it, but I have a question, so I'm not gonna vote to table it cuz I won't get my question answered. And I'm already late, so a little bit late and a lot late, it doesn't matter, I I was hoping to leave here, you know, a few, twenty minutes ago, thirty minutes ago.
Um, so, I I I'm I'm questioning.
So, you, uh, you have to give immediate vote to ta- table, it's motion ta- we don't have to, it's a motion to table all.
Some, maybe.
I I can speak to it, right?
You can, yeah.
Okay.
No, you cannot.
Unless someone makes a motion to.
Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem is the parliamentarian, referring to his expertise.
You can, unless someone makes a motion to end debate by calling the previous question, which I will do.
Well, but I I have the floor.
On the floor, on the table?
But you can't, a motion to rescind is not a debate.
Yes.
Okay, well, the resigned officers governs who has the floor, and if I don't have the floor, I'm just stopping, so.
So, I I I'm, I I'm asking to table this.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
No.
So that, uh, it can come back at the regular council meeting that is televised. So that everyone can see what is happening, and it's not done to the cloak of darkness, literally, cuz it's now dark. Um, and it's not done where our council meetings are not televised, ni- neither on the internet nor on TV. Uh, and so I'm asking that it, we table this until, until then.
I'm not gonna.
Any further discussion? Okay, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
They.
No.
Motion fails, Mayor Pro Tem Dear voting no, Councilwoman Davis, Davis Holmes voting no, and Councilmember Hicks voting no. You, now I have a question on the main motion, Mayor Pro Tem?
What was, thank you.
Well, I make.
Sorry? Oh, yeah, uh, there was one aspect of the motion that I want a clarification on by the maker, the motion to the councilwoman.
No, can.
Um, you stated in there, part of a sentence, uh, it said, where the council members decide, that 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 would be in conflict with the motion we just passed.
No, not in conflict, it's, I'm sorry, we're looking at the.
So you, take that word out of it, I don't have a problem.
Take it out, take it out.
I'm sorry, so what is there taken out, or can you read it again?
Well, the council members. It's such a, as decided by the city council.
Go back to that, uh, through the mayor, uh, if you go back to that sentence and just say, I delete these words.
The mayor will sit to the.
So the city, the assistant city, uh, clerk would understand what the motion will read.
So it's it's not as 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 decided by the council?
Yeah, take that out.
Okay, who's gonna decide it?
Well, we already passed the motion, the Mayor Pro Tem decides it, he or she.
No, we're talking about the other seats, myself and.
So, so your motion is for the other three seats, okay, if that's clear, then I would apologize for six.
Yes. The other three seats, the Mayor Pro Tem selects where he wants, council decides where we sit.
Yeah, um. I don't, it doesn't matter, that doesn't matter to me, I I don't have an issue with it.
Okay, that's my motion.
I'm sorry, so tell me the motion again, just so it's clear, cuz it's not clear.
Um, when, looking at the deus from the public podium, the council seats will be considered numbered from left to right, numbers one through five. Designated seats will be returned for the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem. The mayor will always sit in, sit in the seat number three, the Mayor Pro Tem will sit in either seat number two or four, okay? And that's what you got, as decided by council, that take that out, as decided by council. The city council will also decide the council member seating arrangements for seats number one, seat number two, and seats number four as applicable. I took out as for of yours, yours is.
Thank you.
Okay.
So.
And that's my motion.
And it's been seconded?
Yes.
I make a substitute motion that, uh, we continue the item to the next council meeting.
Correct.
It's been moved and seconded. There's no further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, those opposed?
No.
Motion fails three two, Mayor Pro Tem voting no, Councilmember Hicks voting no, Councilwoman Davis Holmes voting no. I'll make a substitute motion to leave the seating policy as is, even at. You know, I actually said this to somebody, I said, you know, during the most contentious period last year. Um, at least we were fighting at the beginning of the year where we were seating, and I don't think the council's ever been that contentious before. And I was corrected, I was actually told, no, before you go on the council, things were a lot more contentious before. Um, so, I can't, I was gonna say, even in our most contentious period, it never broke down to where we are now.
Don't believe everything you hear.
I do.
Okay, um, so during the most contentious period last year. At least we were not fighting, I I'm speaking, when you have the floor, you can make whatever motion you want, but right now I have the floor.
He's trying to.
During our most contentious, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I was trying to.
During the most contentious period, um, in the city council's history. It never broke down to just talking about where we're sitting.
Five minutes, well, he's already talked.
And, um, I I I don't.
Mister Mayor, your five minutes are almost up, as you talk, but you only.
Speak on this item once, you keep speaking, and you can only speak on this item. Councilwoman, during this sec- session, you just spoken, you spoken on this item multiple times.
Okay, go on, you have two more minutes.
If there's a motion on the floor, if there's a motion on the floor, then the five minute rule applies, if there's no motion on the floor, the five minute rule doesn't apply.
There's a motion on the floor. The motion is on the floor.
Okay, well then, I'll start the five minutes right now.
You've already started it. You've already used up, uh, two minutes, no, you don't have two five minutes, you have all three minutes, I was watching the clock.
Start five minutes. So, as I was saying, that, um. During the most contentious period, it never got so pathetically sad as it is right now. I think it's ironic that today, of all days. Councilmember Hicks asked us, stands up there, asked us to try to work together. Let's, um, have conversations.
It's not working.
That, um, we can try to work together as a team, as a single body, as a council. And here we are, most contentious that it's been in a long, long time unnecessarily. All because the majority of the council doesn't wanna continue this item to the next council meeting. I, I'm perplexed as to what is wrong with having this conversation when we have residents watching? When we have residents listening? Here we are in six, almost six twenty now. Incurring colossal expense of having staff here, taking them away from their other responsibilities. That are much more important to, um, what's going on here in Carson, but instead, here we are at a special city council meeting. Not to talk about improving public safety, not to talk about something other more germane, but on the seating arrangement. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna leave. And if councilmember Hilton leaves, we're adjourned, like no more.
Well, I'd like to tell you how we can improve public safety.
You can't do that, we're gonna reconvene, reconvene the meeting, you and mayor pro temp, you reconvene it. We fell for that.
The meeting, the meeting can be used, because I did not.
I am here for my city.
I'm here to reconvene, let's go for a vote.
So let's go for a vote on that.
I can help you fix the problem in public safety.
Okay, call for the vote. The meeting has been reconvened and put, put.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay. Vote if it's unanimous, the city council. Now, we know their business before the council, if the staff doesn't have anything to add, or the councilors don't have anything to add, I'm about to return the beat.
And you have to designate where you want to sit?
That already passed.
Yeah.
All, work with the city manager.
Okay.
The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.